Maplewood City Council meeting to order on April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickaboo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and Great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the power of which stands one of the nation's hundred allies in it as well.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coriol.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Madam Mayor, former president.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, declaring the results of the general municipal election for council persons. Words one, two, and three, held on Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, as official.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coriol.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash fourteen is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, thanking Sandy Phillips for her five years of service as council member of Ward One with the city of Maplewood.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a brief statement. Sandy, it takes something really special to sit through, my opinion, a commission like planning and zoning that is so technical and then say, I want more. Sandy is one of the most resolute people I know, one of the most consistent people I know, one of the firmest people I know, and I've taken a lot of strength and inspiration from that. So, Sandy, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I didn't give up a present for the encouragement from Sandy, so thank you very much. I don't have as many great words as Sarah, but thank you so much.
I was just gonna say, thank you. You've been awesome. Just awesome for the council. Much appreciated.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Coriol.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash fifteen is approved.
So at this time, I'm going to. At this time, I'm going to read the resolution.
You knew this was coming. The resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, thanking Sandy Phillips for her five years of service as council member of Ward One with the city of Maplewood. Whereas Sandy Phillips was sworn in as council member of Ward One in April of two thousand eighteen, and whereas Sandy has served as chairperson of chapter fifty-six zoning ordinance review meeting since its creation, and whereas. Sandy has demonstrated her devotion to duty and dedication to welfare of others, and whereas. The city of Maplewood has continued to improve and prosper during Sandy's tenure, and whereas. Our entire community has benefited from the loyal and exceptional services rendered by Sandy Phillips. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. Sandy Phillips is hereby honored, commended, and thanked for her five years of service as city of Maplewood. To the city of Maplewood as council member for Ward One. And be a further resolve that the city council thanks Sandy Phillips for her service to the community and offers best wishes for continued success in the community.
Madam Clerk, item number nine.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, thanking Sarah Crossley for her three years of service as council member of Ward Two with the city of Maplewood.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion?
Well, now I feel a little bit of pressure. Thank you, Sarah, for your service. Thank you for stepping up when your community needed you, especially in the beginning of a pandemic. It has been an interesting three years of your term, and I hope you will continue your service to the community of Maplewood in other ways, and thank you for everything that you've done for our community and for this council, and I'm proud to call you a friend.
Just quickly, I'd thank you for some early encouragement, and I think I can owe some of why I'm here to you, so I appreciate you very much, and it's been great getting to know you.
Yeah, I didn't get to meet you like for the first seven months, but. But thank you very much for your dedication to being a council person. It's, it can be tough, especially during a pandemic, so thank you again, much appreciated.
I'd just like to say to both councilmember, members Phillips and Crossley, I'd like to thank both of you because you were both involved in the recruitment process and a big part of the reason as to why I came to Maplewood. So thank you both. Thank you both, which served very admirably, and I'll miss you both, so thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Coriol.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash sixteen is approved.
Thank you. All right, your turn.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, thanking Sarah Crossley for her three years of service as council member of Ward Two with the city of Maplewood. Whereas Sarah Crossley was sworn in as council member of Ward Two in June of twenty twenty, and whereas she has served as the chairperson of chapter thirty, human relations ordinance review meeting. Since its creation, and whereas Sarah has demonstrated her devotion to duty and dedication for the welfare of others, and whereas. The city of Maplewood has continued to improve and prosper during Sarah's tenure, and whereas. Our entire community has benefited from the loyal and exceptional services rendered by Sarah Crossley. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. Sarah Crossley is hereby honored, commended, and thanked for her three years of service to the city of Maplewood as council member for Ward Two, and be it further resolved. That the city council thanks Sarah Crossley for her service to the community and offers best wishes for continued success in the community.
May I have a, excuse me, Madam Clerk, item number ten, please.
Motion to recess.
May I have a motion?
Motion to recess, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries, we stand in recess.
Judge, your honor.
Karen, we good?
Yeah.
Ready? All right, Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Swearing in for newly elected officials.
Do you want to do that one at a time, your honor?
Do it all together.
Okay. Could we please have council members of Ward One, Two, and Three that are newly elected, please step forward? Thank you, your honor, we're ready.
I am. We solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Missouri, the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of New. And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Maplewood, and that I will, and that I will, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability faithfully perform the duties, faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member, of the office of council member. Ward One, Ward Two, during my continuous serving, during my continuous serving.
All right, y'all, it's cake time.
Okay.
Ready, you ready? Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
A reconvening council meeting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Is the public forum.
At this time, anyone in chambers is invited to step to the podium and provide public comments. If you do, please make sure you press the button the entire time you talk, and if you're joining us via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you. Those in the chamber are welcome.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Raiburn, the president of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce, I am here to wish and thank Karen Scheit. Twenty twenty-one Business Person of the Year. For her decades of service to the city of Maplewood and to the businesses of Maplewood. The unique role she's played in supporting the growth of our small business community. Karen's played a significant role in earning Maplewood's reputation of being a helpful and welcoming place to open a business, and I know I can speak personally as the business owner here. She's wonderful to deal with, to deal with, to work with. Anytime that we've ever had an issue, she's really the person, the face of the community, for the business community here, and just very helpful to have around, to help navigate inspections, permits, health inspections, whatever have. You know, comes across our table, she's there to help us. Janine, our executive director, has said that she's come to rely on Karen for being quick to respond to inquiries, reports, licenses, and is a treasure wealth of knowledge about the city. So, on behalf of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce, we salute Karen Scheit for all of her contributions to our community, and wish her the best in her very well-deserved retirement.
Mr. Reese?
No hands there.
All right. Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
Announcement.
Are there any announcements? I think we have String Fest that's coming up May sixth, and we have Taste. Taste of Maplewood, which is, you know, it's the nineteenth.
Nineteen and twenty.
Good job. Yes, nice. All right. Any additional announcements? Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Plan and zoning commission report by Kevin Sullivan.
Thank you so much for staying. I hope you got cake.
Haven't had my dinner yet, so I'll grab, I'll grab everything on the way out. Kevin Sullivan, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I have a handout, I'll give one to Mr. Reese.
Thank you.
So just wanted to report on the commission's activities and accomplishments since April twenty twenty-two. I know that I was before the council in December, but that was more addressing the issue of affordable housing. So while I'll touch upon that, I'll also be touching upon other things that we've done. One major accomplishment was working with our ordinance review committee to draft the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which was adopted by the city council. We've recently established, just because that ordinance review committee has seemed to be doubling the work to bring the work within the commission, and we established a subcommittee of three commissioners. That are gonna serve the purpose and function of prioritizing housing affordability strategies and other inclusive zoning measures and changes. Support and guide ongoing plan and zoning commission work and carry out kind of research, planning, and drafting of ordinances that might be necessary. Just a little preview, we've been working on a draft of an affordable housing set aside ordinance, which has gone through several drafts and iterations. The basic, without it going into detail about it, the basic concept and purpose of this ordinance is to encourage more affordable housing development by pairing economic incentives with affordable housing. You know, that would be provided by either new multifamily developments or the redevelopment of existing multifamily developments. So basically, you would be giving a developer economic incentives in exchange for there being a certain percentage of affordable housing units within that development. We've also been working on, as I touched upon earlier, the request for proposal for planning services and the budget request for the revision update of the city's comprehensive plan. Likewise, have been working on setting priorities and goals with respect to that. We've also just been kind of trying to, with respect to various things that we've decided to undertake with respect to the comprehensive plan, and trying to address affordable housing to set up a working plan, which is attached to the handout. That has set out our goals, our priorities, our strategies with respect to affordable housing measures. We have had seven meetings since April twenty twenty-two and five work sessions since April twenty twenty-two. Being that when we don't have an official petition and an official meeting, we would meet at a work session for two hours and work on kind of longer-term goals. In those seven meetings and those petitions, we've reviewed and approved three short-term rental unit. I guess rental houses within the community, including one under the newer revised short-term rental ordinance. We've, and this is a positive development, we're able to review and approve two accessory dwelling unit petitions. It really worked out perfectly with respect to these properties, that they were just, you know, perfect for that, and hopefully we'll be seeing more. Likewise, really only one rezoning in the past year, and that was at thirty-seven twenty-seven Oxford, kind of a weird. Empty lot that was kind of behind McLean's Bar and Grill off of Big Bend, and it was actually zoned residential, but there was no way any type of residential housing would be built on that lot. There is an adjacent property which used to have a used car lot on it, and those, that lot will be used as parking for a new development that's going, or new commercial development that's going to be going in where that used car lot used to be. And I've basically handled a couple of conditional use permits with respect to new restaurants or changes in ownership in restaurants. You know, looking forward. One of our main focuses is to continue the efforts that we've undertaken to implement the strategies that we have to stabilize, preserve. And increase affordable housing through some zoning changes and new ordinances. We're going to continue to work on the revision and the update of the comprehensive plan and maintain that as a focus. And also, we know that we have two commissioners that have terms expiring in June twenty twenty-two, and I believe there is one other additional opening from a commissioner. That is, that recently resigned, so, you know, the commission is looking forward to having, I guess, returning commissioners or some new members in the commission. And if I can answer any questions about our activities, I'd welcome, welcome the opportunity to.
I appreciate all the work that you all are doing. I said it during the work session, but I'll say it again, you all are doing heavy lifting, and I sincerely appreciate you all for that. I do have a question about the ordinance that you all are working on. Do you have an estimate of a timeline where you would be able to recommend that to council for review?
May. So we think we, our subcommittee, we think we have it in final form, so we'll take it to the commission and hopefully get the sign off and the recommendation to be able to. To send it to the city council, I guess, depending on when the first city council meeting is in May.
It's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just basically echo what the mayor said. I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, it's really important to me, so if there's anything that you need as far as help or anything, let us know, or let me know, let us know, that you guys are really doing some great work. Keep it up, I appreciate that so much.
Thank you, it's, it's good to hear about, and thank you for the kind words.
All right, have a good evening, I hope you get a good dinner.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Clerk. Item number eighteen.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, honoring and commending Karen Scheid on the occasion of her retirement after twenty-four years of service with the city of Maplewood.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion? Besides the mayor crying.
I'll just say, since I've been on the council for a while, that your services have been extraordinarily invaluable to everybody, the city, the council. Citizens of Maplewood, we really appreciate everything you've done, and hopefully you can enjoy your retirement, because it's been some years.
So I've, I've only been on council for two years, but for me to cry like this means that you have been a very important part of my service to the city. I sincerely appreciate you. I'm gonna miss you. I appreciate how you would take text messages from me. And, and I appreciate the reminders that you would give me to come in and sign documents. And I. You are, you are invaluable. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that Karen has made, you know, my twenty-plus months in the role of city manager as. You know, puts up with me and allows, allows me to loom over her at her desk sometimes, and. But she, she has made my transition much smoother, much more smooth, and, and I appreciate her very much, so I wish her very well in her retirement.
With happiness for you and sadness for us, Madam Clerk, for the last time, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Mada.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Coriol.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen is approved.
Thank you.
The resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, honoring and commending Karen Scheid on the occasion of her retirement after twenty-four years of service with the city of Maplewood. Whereas Karen Scheid was hired as an administrative assistant to the city manager for the city of Maplewood on July first, nineteen ninety-nine, and whereas. Karen also served as deputy city clerk and city clerk since January first, two thousand and five, and whereas. Karen has served the city for twenty-four years in an outstanding manner, completing as an administrative assistant and working her way to the position of city clerk. And. And whereas. Your experience, twenty-four years performed as a duty and responsibilities, and her working relationships were always praised by obvious dedication to getting the job done in an exceptional manner, and whereas. Your proofreading skills, but not matching. There is no doubt, she corresponds to many more typos now that I'm retiring, and whereas. You will be missed both professionally and as a friend to the city of Maplewood. Please stand out very well for your success in your life pursuit. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, as follows. The mayor and the council, on behalf of all of our citizens, hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Karen Scheid for her distinguished service to the community and commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her duties and responsibilities for the past twenty-four years. And be it further resolved that the mayor can contribute to her investment for continued success.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I've enjoyed working with you. I'm sorry you're coming in at the end of my frame here. But I wish you much success. I've really enjoyed my time with the city of Maplewood, but I am ready for retirement. So thank you very much, and you.
Thank you, Karen.
Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
Business license revocation hearing.
Mr. Reese?
Yes, so. Just to comment on this, we withdraw the complaint for three of the business.
Yes, so, um, just to comment on this, we withdraw the complaint for three of the businesses, all but Jesse D. Miller Interior Design, because these three businesses have paid their taxes and are now in compliance, and request to postpone the hearing for Jesse D. Miller Interior Design until the council meeting on May 9th at 7:30 PM.
All right. May I have a motion to postpone the hearing to May 9th?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? So I spoke too soon, Madam Clerk. I'm gonna ask you to do two more roll call votes. So Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Um, Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Mada.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 20.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri according Andrea Majoras as city clerk.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Very happy that you're here.
Yeah, I'm happy too. Thank you so much. I know, but as I keep telling everybody, I wear a size 10, so I wanna do my best, okay?
Reese, I, I sincerely appreciate you choosing Maplewood, um, and I have had an opportunity to work with Andrea already, and she's just lovely, so I don't think it'll be too difficult to fill those shoes.
I'm glad you chose me, so.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mada.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution 23 dash 18 is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 21.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to accept a bid of BP roofing in the amount of $10,850 for a roof replacement for the North Pavilion in Deer Creek Park.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion?
Wow. I mean, that's a good price. I mean, that's, you know, over three stories up, so.
Very happy.
Hearing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Mada.
Yes.
Resolution 23 dash 19 is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number 22.
Discussion of Deer Creek Center and Sun and Station Community Improvement District Budget.
So let me just frame that, let me just frame this, um, again, this is the Deer Creek Center and Sun and Station Community Improvement Districts. I serve in the board of both of these dri- districts. We meet, uh, once per year. Um, the board of directors of each of the, of the community improvement districts, um, shall submit to the governing body of the city, which is Maplewood City Council, uh, in which is located a proposed annual budget, setting forth expected expenditures, revenues, and rates of assessments and taxes for the fiscal year. Again, the governing body, Maplewood City Council, may review and comment on the proposed budget and must do so in writing if you wish to. And, um, so that's what this procedure is all about. Uh, we included a bunch of information in the packet. We have Angela Uglum available, um, who is the general counsel to the district, you know, if you, you should, available via Zoom, if you, you should have any questions. So that's the extent of my comments.
Writing his email, okay?
Yes.
And we should have that be directed to.
Um, it, yes.
All right, Madam Clerk, item number 23.
Old business.
I don't believe we have any. All right, Madam Clerk, item number 24.
Council communication.
Congratulations to our new council members. Nice job. Welcome. You'll find us, uh, very open-minded and very eclectic.
Madam Clerk, item number 25.
Mayor's report.
I want to echo what our deputy mayor, um, just stated. Welcome to the council. Very grateful that you all are here. I'm grateful that you chose to serve our community. Uh, as you can see, we, we are eclectic. We, we cut up up here. We rap. It's not, we're not boring. How about that? That's the best way I can say it. So welcome to this crew. Um, and then also, I just wanted to let the council and, uh, Mr. Reese know, I have been meeting with the mayor's elder task force, um, for a few months now, and we are working on a project that's focused on our Maplewood elders. The project essentially is helping, uh, elders that are 65 and up file appeal paperwork with the county property assess, assessor's office. Excuse me. Um, if we have an elder that's not, uh, technologically savvy, then it's gonna be difficult for them to scan their pictures and upload all of that information. And so, right now, we are, um, working on a partnership with our Maplewood library to reserve a computer. We'll have access to a scanner, and I am going to be the one that's volunteering the time to help our elders submit their application if they want any assistance. So there's gonna be four, um, four Thursdays, two in the month of May and two in the month of June, where I will essentially have office hours at our library. Um, and it'll be from, I think I had set it up from like maybe 11 to 2. Okay, thank you, thank you. So 11 to 2. Um, so we have some flyers that are being made by our fabulous Carolyn Munch. She is making those flyers for us. Um, and Mr. Reese, what I'd like to do is just give that to you, so you can disseminate that to our community and make sure that our elders get it. Uh, and we should be done with that flyer very soon. Thank you. Very, very soon. So I'll get that to you for review and of course approval, and then I'd, I'd love for that to be disseminated on our social media, email, everywhere, so our elders can get this, get free help. And that's, that concludes my report.
Will that be physically posted as well, in the areas, or just distributed?
Yes, thank you for that question. So I'm gonna give you the digital version, so you can put that on, you know, social media and Facebook and things like that, but then we will also have, um, like a paper flyer that we will have disseminated throughout the community, try to get it into some coffee shops and things like that. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so that concludes my report. Madam Clerk, item number 26.
City attorney's report. So I have nothing to report, but I would also echo, you know, welcome to the council, all of you, um, and look forward to working with you all, um, and Andrea as well, and we're so, we're so sad we're going to lose Karen. I do hope you enjoy your retirement, and I do hope I don't bother you too much.
No problem. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 27.
City manager's report.
And I also want to welcome the, the new council members, and I'll be at that as soon as tomorrow, um, about some logistical items and budget matters, so you'll be here for me tomorrow, and then I'll be reaching out to both of you via phone on some items, and then welcome to both of you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 28.
A public forum.
At this time, anyone in the chambers is invited to step to the podium if they'd like to make a public comment. You're joining us via Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
No hands on Zoom there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reese, we do not need a closed session, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.